Planning Board is now in session. Monday, May 10th, 7:00 PM pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 3818. And the Governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitations, limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Southborough's website at www.southboroughtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting or participate in the public hearing may do so in the following manner, again, www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So, good evening, everyone. First item on the agenda is a discussion item, Master Plan Committee update, which I think is going to be rather small. Mrs. Latrell.
Yes, sadly, we did not have a quorum for our last meeting on Wednesday. Our next meeting is June 10th at 7:30.
June 10th? Very good. Anything else, questions, comments, anyone from the public?
Mimi, is there any chance to schedule an earlier meeting? Do you find, do you think it's necessary? Or you think that still will work with our goal to get some of those graphs updated and charts?
Um, I do have some of...
Yeah, I was gonna ask Sarah if she's gotten any.
So, yes, I did actually receive some data requests from several of the chapters. So, we could, I think, piece together kind of any information that we haven't received. So, schools, for example, is one that we have not received yet. So, and recreation, but we could perhaps look at the 2008 plan and just see, you know, what might make sense and then send it out, you know, to the prospective leads and just get a, you know, yes, like feedback, you know, versus them having to kind of do that heavy lifting.
So, we can keep going in the interim, in between the meetings, we can keep moving with the plan to procure some assistance.
Anything else, anyone?
Any input from the board on the, uh, the goals? And recommendations?
All right, Mimi, I did not look.
So, we will continue on, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a 7:05 PM continued public hearing. This is for an annual town meeting warrant article to amend section 174-10, site plan approval. This public hearing is continued from February 22nd, March 8th, March 29th, April 12th, and April 26th. So, time for this public hearing is 7:05, which should, by my computer, be any second now. And then we will begin our continued public hearing tonight. Any second now, there it is. So, this would be... Mrs. Latrell.
So, in our last meeting, we had asked Town Planner to seek Town Council opinion on two things. One, if this article could be amended to reinsert the constructive approval language on the floor of town meeting. And two, whether there was any legal recourse on, for a proponent, if that language was not reinserted in the article passed as printed in the warrant. And it seems like, correct me if I'm wrong, Karina, that Town Council opined that the article could be amended to reinsert that language. And that there, although unclear because site plan is not part of Chapter 48, there would be a legal recourse, a proponent could appeal should the planning board fail to act.
That's what I read in, as well, in Town Council's feedback, that an amendment that reintroduces the constructive approval language can be made for the town meeting consideration. And also, the, the system regarding site plan approval and appeals has a wide range of response. So, Al, Town Council speaks to that in his feedback to us. So, there is recourse in, in an appeal, in any case, but Planning Board, if, if, if an applicant doesn't agree to extend or request extension, Planning Board always has the option to deny the site plan approval based on incomplete information. That's all I wanted to say on that.
So, what I would suggest is that, based on Al, Town Council's advice, that the language can be added back in, no problem. And since the issue of constructive approval is not universally agreed to as far as removal or keeping, I would recommend that the board tonight stay away from a discussion about constructive approval and consider a motion to creating a, to create a draft amendment to this warrant article that would add that sentence back in. And therefore, removing any discussion about constructive approval. And then the article would be focused on its main reason for being there, which is to clean up the minor site plan component of 174-10. So, if the board feels that that's the way to go, then certainly we can have discussion on constructive approval if you want. But I would suggest that we just entertain a motion to add that sentence back in.
So, moved? Second.
So, we have a motion to amend the article to add the constructive approval wording back in. And that draft amendment would be created by, drafted by the Town Planner and then sent to Town Council for his check. And then if he recommends that the moderator look at it, we would have that done and be able to tell the public at the town meeting the path and reason for, for returning it and recommending the amendment to return that language back to the, to the article. Any discussion on the motion? Miss, Mr. Mills?
So, wait, are we, are we keeping it in our back pocket if it becomes a big discussion item? Or we're just gonna put it in now?
Well, we, we can't, we can't put it in now, but we can vote to bring an amendment forward as soon as the article is called at the town meeting. The speaker will then say, "Mr. Moderator, I'd like to issue, I'd like to have the, the floor consider an amendment." And of course, they always say, "Oh, it's gotta be in writing. We would already have it in writing. It's gotta be reviewed by Town Council. It will already have been reviewed by Town Council and the moderator." And then the amendment would be read to the floor, if the floor, and explained. And if the floor agrees, they would vote to add the, to approve the amendment, which would add the language back in. And then the main article would come forward to...
Who's that?
To be voted on.
Well, so my question was, do we wanna, I mean, I think we could leave it the way it is. And then if it becomes a big discussion item, one of us could make the motion to say, you know, "Mr. Moderator, I move that we add back in the language and we have it in our back pocket and then just insert it." Or is that gonna be too confusing?
It seems, it seems as though we've already been advised that at least two, I think, two selectmen are not happy with the, the removal. And I think that would precipitate a discussion. And it might, might, you know, divert the attention from where we really want it, which is the minor site plan.
Okay, all right, that's fine. No other questions?
Go, go ahead, Sarah.
Did anyone, or did, a discussion regarding maybe extending that timeframe for constructive approval? I know that the Board of Selectmen have expressed that they would be in consideration or, you know, in support of adding it back in and maybe pushing it out to 90 days or 120 days, is that we're kind of thinking about at this point?
I would, I'm, I'm open to that myself. We can see what the board says, but I would make, keep it simple. Put what's in there back in so the people have a comfort level that we're not changing anything relative to constructive approval. If someone else wants to make that amendment, like selectmen, to move it out to 90 days, then we would well, probably welcome it. But, um, again, if we try to amend it to a longer period of time, people may not have a good understanding of what constructive approval is. And since these are among the last articles of town meeting, people's patience is gonna be thin and they don't wanna have a, a technical discussion that late in the day or in the meeting. So, I think the art part of this is to keep it as simple as we can. But I'm, that's just my opinion. Go ahead, go ahead, Mimi.
So, the strategy is to move the article and then immediately propose an amendment so that constructive approval doesn't get discussed on town meeting. Well, to try and avoid a long discussion on constructive approval, is that the strategy?
Yeah. And I think the, I think, once the article is read in and the amendment is allowed to go, go forward for discussion, we can explain to the public that the original intent of this article was to address the minor site plan and that it was Town Council's recommendation that, at the same time, we, we take out the constructive approval. But as, as a result of the public hearing process, we've learned that it, it's probably better to just leave it in.
Okay.
And if necessary, I mean, you did some great research on that. And maybe there'll be other areas out there that would help or reinforce the idea of removing it. But until then, we may not be, we may be trying to fix something that, that at least for now is not broken. Any other questions or comments? So, the motion is to have the Town Council, a Town Planner, draft an amendment to add the language back in, have it reviewed by Town Council and ready for town meeting. Any discussion? Questions, comments? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Holyhan, yes.
Very good. Any other questions or comments on that, this public hearing article 174-10?
No, and we have no attendees at the moment.
So, the other part of this is the requirement, because it's zoning, to submit a report. And as you probably know, Town Planner has drafted a report reflecting our work on this article in 2020 and those public hearings, and then our work on this article 2021 and the current public hearing. And the reason why it was in both years and what happened to it, which was that it was agreed to pull, pull the article and, and push it on to the next town meeting, which is in 12 days. So, if you've, the, um, so the question would be, if you've read the report, it doesn't mention anything about an amendment. So, if it, if the report is silent relative to the amendment, the people may say, "Well, okay, you're, you're reporting to us that you're okay with the article without the amendment. So, are you okay with the article with the amendment? So, should we put in the report our feelings about the amendment?" And then if we put it in, if we put in the report that we're okay with the article with the amendment and the amendment doesn't pass, people might say, "Well, are you okay with the article without the amendment?" So, uh, I think, relative to the report, if we entertained a motion that the Planning Board is okay with the report saying essentially that we're okay with the article with or without the amendment. And, um, and if that's the vote tonight, that gives Town Planner the green light to craft the report, one, one of those two options. And she would get guidance from Aldo relative to that type of a, a report that would say it's okay either way.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we...
No, go ahead.
I make a motion, we, uh, approve the Town Planner to go ahead and amend the report for Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article, amend section 174-10, Site Plan Approval, to include language that we are okay with or without the amendment that we will request at town meeting floor.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? You say we have nobody watching, Sarah?
Nobody.
Nobody at the moment.
No, actually, uh, that's a huge compliment. They, they, you know, we're trusted to carry on. Yeah. No, this is made in second, any discussion, hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Holyhan, yes.
Thank you. So, if we're all set with, if we're all set with that, then it might be appropriate to close the public hearing.
Chairman, I make a motion, we close the public hearing for Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article, amend section 174-10, Site Plan Approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion to close the public hearing? Mrs. Latrell.
So, if we close the public hearing, does that mean we can't have any more discussion on this item? Like, if there any, if Town Council has any tweaks or anything to the amendment or to the report, or can we entertain that?
We, we wouldn't have another meeting to, to entertain it until town meeting. So, um, I believe the previous motion that got approved was basically giving the Town Planner the green light to, you know, draft the report as we, as we stated. And there's latitude in there for Town Council to modify the language, as long as the intent, which is, we're okay with the article with or without the amendment.
Okay.
And just, just a correction, Mr. Chairman, it looks like, it says on the agenda, our next meeting is May 24th, which I think is the Monday after town meeting, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, we, we don't even have a meeting scheduled at town meeting?
We could, if we wanted to, but I don't know how productive that would be.
Agreed.
Especially since we're kind of setting the table for having the article go forward with or without the amendment.
No, I agree. I just wanna make sure that, from my own mind, that we weren't scheduled to have a meeting yet at town meeting.
We can.
No, it's okay.
It's also my understanding from the prior years that you don't need to post a, a meeting agenda for a town meeting.
Right, but sometimes if the, like, what times the town meetings start? 10, 10 o'clock in the morning? So, we would schedule a Planning Board meeting at 9 o'clock?
Yes, if you needed a pre, pre ATM meeting like we typically did, we could post one. But if it's not necessary, you don't need one for the town meeting specifically.
Yeah, I mean, we can post a, another Planning Board meeting anytime between now and probably 9:00 AM on the 22nd. If there's a desire to do so, we'll have to do that tonight to continue this hearing. If there isn't, then we'll close the hearing. So, there's a motion to close the hearing. And it's been seconded. And we just had some discussion. Any more discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes. Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Holyhan, yes.
Good, thank you. Public hearing is closed.
Sarah, could you just, is it possible for you to update Dawn's label during?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Sorry about that. Because it says Karina Quinn under Dawn.
Thanks, Karina.
You're welcome.
Uh, okay, next item on the agenda is a 7:10 PM public hearing, continued public hearing, Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article, amend section 174-9, Special Permit Requirements 174-19, Extensions or Alterations. This public hearing is continued from February 22nd, March 8th, March 29th, April 12th, and April 26th. This is a warrant article brought, brought forward by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is there anyone here from the ZBA?
Someone from the ZBA, Dustin is here.
So, Karina, have you been, have any information that would, or, or compel us to not close this hearing tonight?
I don't, since the last public hearing, number four on April 12th, actually, April 26th, sorry about that, we have not received any further input or questions. Sarah, I don't believe you have either.
Nope, I have not, and I've, I've kept the ZBA staff apprised to, you know, how things are going here on our end. And so, hearing no other comments or concerns from them, though.
And Katie Barry now works downstairs in the townhouse, right below us. So, we see her pretty much daily.
Does, are, are we aware, is anyone aware of the, the person who will present this article for the ZBA?
At last mentioned during the public hearing, I think either at the very beginning of this public hearing or at last year's public hearing for this topic, I think David Williams, he's the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I believe he would, he's the one who'll be speaking to this.
That's my understanding, too.
Yeah, the Town Moderator, when he did the dry, dry run last week, probably established, either established then or since, who was gonna present it. So, any more questions, comments? Otherwise, we could entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Chairman, I make a motion, we close the public hearing for Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article, amend section 174-9, Special Permit Requirements 174-19, Extensions or Alterations.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Holyhan, yes.
Very good. Public hearing is closed. Next item on the agenda is the 7:15, continued public hearing.
Can I just mention one thing before you totally go out? That we also have a report to town meeting on that article as well.
Oh, right. That's right, yep.
So, it's standard procedure, um, language that the Planning Board supports and recommends, Article 35, which Andrew just described in the motion and is prepared to speak to this decision at Annual Town Meeting. I don't know if I should probably, well, the Planning Board is always prepared to speak to these, but that's what the report indicates.
So, for this article, it may be appropriate for the board to vote, have a separate vote to support the article?
Yes. Sorry, that happened so fast, I was just trying to...
And the, the report, when we, and the report, the draft report reflects that we voted to support it. Mr. Mills? Well, we need a motion to, for the Planning Board to support, what, what's the article number?
Article 35.
Make a motion, we draft a, um, what is it, a write-up?
No, this, this motion is, is just for the, that the Planning Board support Article 35.
So, moved?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to support Article 35, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Holyhan, yes.
So, now the draft report that we've seen for this article reflects that vote. Can move on to the next public hearing? Let's continue public hearing for Town Meeting Warrant Article to update section 174-12.1, Outdoor Illumination. This is continued from February 22nd, March 8th, March 29th, April 12th, and April 26th. Mrs. Holyhan.
Yeah, so there is a lot to update. So, last week, I participated in the advisory meeting. Did I also participate in selectman meeting? No, that was the week before. In the advisory meeting, and it was a good discussion with Kathy Cook and the advisory team members. And I came out of there acknowledging that we would have a few things, and tonight we do. So, the first is around language specific to applicability. So, Chairman Healy had requested that we write specific language about kind of utilizing terminology unless and until the lights were, were broken or vandalized, that people didn't have to change their, their bulbs. And so, we wanted to ensure that we wrote, the working group wanted to make sure we wrote it in a way that was reflective of the fact that applicability still applies to single and two-family homes. And I think the challenge here is that people think we're changing applicability and we're not. We're maintaining applicability for everybody. So, Aldo... So although town council opined on that and provided new alternative language that I would be motioning an amendment immediately after we motion to have this discussed on town meeting. And so the language there, was that you, Sarah? Did you, were you just putting that up?
It was. I I just grabbed the, I just grabbed the latest, latest version.
Perfect. So that was the first thing. And then the second thing advisory had requested in our applicability, we suggest that it applies to a spot or floodlight with wattage greater than 60 watts. So they wanted definition of what a spot and a floodlight were in our definition section. So we've we've written definitions, and I think it would be great if the the planning board can look at those definitions and be comfortable with those. Those are, I have researched the definition of spot and floodlight and written what I think is appropriate. And I would just like that if we can throw those up there afterwards as well.
Here we go. So can you see the definitions?
Can you make it bigger?
Yes.
Thank you.
So basically, the difference between a floodlight and a spotlight, just very broadly, is a floodlight is a broad beam, kind of wider angle, and it illuminates a kind of a broad range for shorter distance. A spotlight is a narrow beam of light, and it projects light a farther distance. So you can kind of see farther down like a path, like a flashlight is a spotlight. And a floodlight might be something that you have over your garage that illuminates the the area of your driveway. I'll let you read them. I'm not going to read them to you.
Comfortable with that.
Thanks, Andrew.
Is this a collection of your research, or is this from one source?
No, it's a collection from the research. I think there's technical ways where you want to kind of define the angle of the beam of the angle, and then there's kind of the the broader applicability or lay language, and that's where I thought it would be important to pull in where these lights are typically used. But I think it it's hopefully defining what the difference is.
Yeah, and has has the building inspector looked at these definitions?
No.
We can get her, we can get her this information pretty quickly. The other thing is that if we do move forward with the consultant that we are, that the working group is looking at, he may be able to give you some feedback on these two definitions, and they could always be, again, amended on the floor as a definition.
Yeah, so that would be a motion to amend not only the applicability section, but this definition section. So we'd be making, I think it's two motions. Three, right? Alighting the amendment of the applicability and the amendment to the definitions. I don't know if we can do it all in one.
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're right, Marnie, that if people are okay with the definition, but they're not okay with the applicability, the article could still go forward with with these definitions. Separate separate issues. Yeah, I'm cool. I'm okay with this. So Andrew, how about Jesse? Mimi?
Yep, looks good.
Perfect.
So this this will get to our newly found consultant and also to the building inspector for input. Either way, I mean, you can still change these right up to the town meeting, so.
And then we, Dustin also joined, so I don't know if we want to pull Dustin in, Sarah, because he's joined for the meeting.
Absolutely.
And I did get the approval of the moderator to have Dustin co-promote, co-present with me. And he's agreed to do so. Why?
Well, his appearance, what was it, two years ago? At a planning board meeting?
That's the genesis of all this. Yes, absolutely.
No good deed goes unpunished.
Just trying to.
And as he's coming in, this is the language that town council. So Chairman Healy had suggested some language, and so we, the working group, changed that language and tried to make it very clear. And so this is what town council provided in a very straightforward memo, which was really nice to receive.
Yeah, Marnie, I just want to point out that what's highlighted on the screen right now is what we provided to town council for review, and he tweaked both of these slightly to remove some of the parentheses and the way it was written out, instead of 4/11, you put April 11th. It just made it a little, a better flowing paragraph, both of them.
So I can, I can share town council's feedback. Next.
There's Dustin now.
He's coming right on.
Hi, everyone.
Welcome, Dr. Heilmann.
It's good to see you all.
We're at the final stretch.
Been a long road.
Okay. So here is the exact language that Aldo came up with in the italics. So those two paragraphs would replace the two highlighted paragraphs you just saw.
And I think from the working group perspective, I think we're very pleased with this result, and I think it's it in, it kind of continues to validate the intent, which is basically he wrote it nicely, the not to create an automatic non-compliance by existing illuminated structures or fixtures, but instead to define what needs to occur that warrants subsequent compliance.
And has this latest language been reviewed by the building inspector? Or indoor, the selectman?
No, it was hot off the press, I think around 4:30 today.
Okay, so like, like the previous article, the there's time to have this reviewed by others and can be revised right up until town meeting.
Yes, but the intent, just to be clear, the intent is carried through now that different from what was printed in the warrant that I believe it's different. Where it said comply with guidance in the rules and outdoor and the planning board non-conforming fixtures for any reason shall be replaced in compliance with the bylaw. So I believe what was printed said that they would have to be replaced right away, right, Marnie? But this new language, right, so that that was printed in the warrant, but this new language, which has been worked and massaged up to this point by the working group and town council says that if you have existing lights and under the new bylaw, you don't have to change them to comply unless they break or they need replacement. Then you would update your bulb or fixture. Just so you're clear that that is, there is a distinct difference between what was printed in the warrant and what's proposed here.
So in the process of explaining that, I think it would give people comfort that what was originally proposed was initially perceived as being not the greatest. And now this is a better much better way to assure compliance.
Right, it eased that requirement so that people have you know, it's not an immediate impact. It's a gradual impact. If you realize your bulb is 120 watts in certain color temperature, you can probably put in 100 watt bulb and with, you know, a lower color temperature and you would comply.
And I actually think that's an important, if anyone's listening to this on this tape, I think it's really important to realize and you know, I think finally to be able to articulate. So the only, it applies to anybody who has a light bulb outside, whether it's a residence or business. And if it's a floodlight or a spotlight, and you have a 60 watt bulb in that floodlight or spotlight, this law applies. Or if you have a fixture that has a 120 watt light bulb, then this law applies. If you have a sconce on the side of your house that has a 70 watt bulb, you don't have to worry about it. We would still love for you to choose the better, safer, softer light, the yellow light, the non-blue light. But this applicability does not apply to you. If you even have, you know, a floodlight, that's a 30 watt bulb, it would not apply to you. So I think it's it's the applicability, I think, is it was confusing, and I think just like really reading it and understanding it now, I think that's really important for people to recognize that their garage light is not going to cause any challenges about light trespass. And I think another point, Karina, you made is I mean, not that we would ideally think this is great, but if you have a single bulb hanging on a wire, and it's a 40 watt bulb, and you have no shield, and you have nothing, and it's just hanging on your porch, that is, that is not applicable to this law. So you can have that bulb, 40 watt bulb hanging. It's about the wattage. It's not about in the shield, but it's not about it's not about anybody who just has a house light. How much you have a house light. So if you have 120 watt bulb, and you decide to move to a 100 watt, you are no longer have to worry about this bylaw affecting you.
Right, it's that simple.
The last thing I'd want to do is open up a can of worms at this point, but I'm only thinking of this now, but LED lights have different wattage. And these are all equivalent to incandescent wattages. So I'm wondering if we may have issues in the future with that. It's possible, I mean, a 75, 60 or 75 watt incandescent, you can replace it with an LED that's five watts. So I'm wondering if, which means you can have a 10 or 15 watt LED that's super duper bright. So I'm wondering if if this is indeed going to be future-proof.
You could add the thresholds, the LED thresholds, so it would say wattage and then you know, equivalent, because it's equivalent to 60 watts, equivalent to five watts.
Yeah.
Well, Dustin, how does that, how does it relate to lumens? Because in the applicability, it actually specifies the lumens threshold for the two categories of lights, and then it just gives an equivalent for public understanding that nine or 800 lumens equals a 60 watt incandescent. So when you're talking lumens, is that more universal to LED?
It is. Yeah, in fact, it's universal period. And I think, you know, I'm just not remembering all the details, but if we do have that in there, the equivalency, then I think we're okay. Yeah.
Yes, I just want to point that out specifically so that everyone's really clear on it. In the bylaw, let me just get to it here real quick. Applicability, outdoor illumination by flood or spot luminaires rated at 900 lumens or more. And then in parentheses, it says, which is approximately equal to 160 watt incandescent light bulb. So that brings it down to everyday people who don't deal with this all the time. Gives them a perspective, like 900 lumens. Most people don't know what that represents. But a 60 watt bulb represents that, but it is specified in lumens or by any other luminaires rated at 1800 lumens or more, which is approximately equal to a 120 watt incandescent light bulb. So if lumens are universal in a sense, then I think we're okay.
Yep. No, this, I think we've been working on this so long, we're just forgetting what a good job we did, so.
Yeah. And we're talking watts and incandescent right now, because that's what people will understand when we, when there's, when they're represented, when they're presented this information.
That's right.
And if you even Google 900 lumens, it'll tell you it's 60 watts or 15 watts in LED, and we can say that in the presentation, or so you can, you can find out what the equivalent is. So lumens is the universal, I think.
Thank goodness they put that in there in 2005.
So anyway, I think from our perspective, from the working group, we're very happy with Aldo's suggestions. We feel like we've ticked the checkmark for advisory's request on writing the definitions. We've incorporated Chairman Healy's concerns. The final thing that advisory had had thought we had said that we would be writing the process for enforcement, and I said we would not be doing that. That we could certainly collaborate with that, but that's not in our purview. That's not something we would be doing on the enforcement. And in, all we do in this bylaw is we revert it back to the other section in the bylaw that states how enforcement is handled with zoning issues. So I think that kind of ties all three outstanding issues that the other towns and committees had, I mean, town committees had raised. So we feel like we're in a really good place, and we got some excellent, I got some excellent feedback on how to present at town meeting. We have five minutes, and there's no presentation allowed, so I will be presenting about two minutes, and Dustin will be presenting about three minutes. So I'll present on the kind of the technical stuff, the applicability, and Dustin will provide insight on the detrimental effects of blue light.
So there's no PowerPoint, you mean? They're not, we're not able to do anything like that? Well, for anyone, or?
Nope, for nobody.
The meeting's outside, Dustin. So right now, they don't have the means to set up a screen and computer and wiring and everything and wifi, whatever.
Okay. Okay.
So it's just verbal presentation by the, by the board members who speak to their articles.
Yeah, it's just going to be interesting, because I wonder if anybody has a question about particular language, I guess they're just going to have to speak it to everyone rather than be able to show the particular language of it.
It's a challenge.
Yeah, definitely.
Right, and if, at the townhouse, we have printed warrants now, so I saved some for the planning board members. Couple of you already got them. So if you need one, we have them there for you, and Dustin, we can get you one too.
They go like hotcakes?
I wouldn't say that, but.
Yeah, so for all of the the motions that that are going to be made on the floor for this stuff, it'll just have to be all spoken. Wow, okay.
Yeah, it's going to be very challenging. And then we, Dustin also has put together a fantastic mailer. So we thought that mailing to people who had attended town meeting for the last three years, we don't know how many people. we don't know how many people that would be, we're getting lists from um, Mr. Hagerty. And that we would be putting together, we're getting a quote on that mailer. So it's a two-sided mailer just on the blue light, the detrimental effects of blue light and kind of what it means for voters. And we think that education piece would be um, very well received by people when they have to look at the, the lighting bylaw and better understand it.
And um, I, I um, would also like to say that if uh, the budget of that is not substantial, that we possibly have a little room um, in the budget to cover the cost of that printing, if the planning board finds that appropriate.
I would find it appropriate, but I'd have to look to my other members.
Mina, you're managing the budget. Unless you hear any objections, then we trust your judgment.
It's something that planning might do anyway as part of their process, just like with the public hearing, we paid for the legal ads, et cetera. Um, it might be part of that as well. So we'll see how much it is and then we'll make it work.
Right, I'm not hearing any objections, so you use your best judgment.
All right.
As you always do. I want to go back to the um, this is just a little piece of history. Um, Karina, do you have your um code there?
I do.
I, I forget whether it was in the eighties or the nineties, but um, town meeting, they, if there was any type of uh, presentation, it was either just verbal or they used the um, those overhead projectors. And no matter what, what you did when you put that uh translucent uh clear plastic, whatever, on that light table, it was always upside down and reversed. And you'd have to flip it a couple of times to get it right. So that was, that was the um, the way it was done uh until uh, the planning board presented the irregular shape a lot uh bylaw. And I, I don't really remember when it was, but I wrote that bylaw. Um, and I created the uh, presentation on a maybe it was a floppy disk. And actually had a computer and had it uh projected onto a screen.
Are you talking about this one?
Um, well, it talks about, it talks about the circles, the seventy-five foot diameter.
Yes, mm-hmm, okay.
So I was told that in the two hundred plus year history of the town of Salpro, I was the first person to have a computer assisted uh bylaw presented and passed. So if you look at the date on that irregular shape past section.
In the zoning district, yeah, the, the criteria.
That was the first time a computer was ever used for a presentation of a town meeting warrant article.
And was it a word processor or a computer?
It wasn't my computer. I had, I think I had to borrow Vanessa's. So and
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I maybe it wasn't a floppy. It might have been a thumb drive, but it's, it's that um, recent that, you know, computers weren't used in these town meetings.
It says here that um, like for residential aid, that criteria of the seventy-five foot circle was added in um, April nineteen ninety-five, amended in nineteen ninety-nine.
So ninety-five, first time a computer was used.
It is too bad. I think not that, that we don't have a, like a computer, because we all have smartphones, like to be able to leverage that in a town meeting. But I guess we don't have the wherewithal to do that. Anyway, sorry.
Not yet. There will be, um, will there be printouts of the, of the motions that are to be made or no for?
I think we have to create those.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're working on that this week based on tonight's meeting, tonight's public hearing. So we talked about, you know, the site plan has an amendment that we're going to write up. There's a special form that gets submitted to town clerk with the language um, so that they can already be mostly prepared. There still may be amendments on the floor to those amendments, right? Sometimes there's back and forth. If I'm not mistaken, Don, I don't have as much experience in that, but.
But Dustin, you're thinking to hand them out, right, with the warrant article? So people have them in hands, they can read them?
Yeah, that was a thought because I, I'm just, I'm just thinking about the complications of trying to, to dictate subtleties of language when people don't have it in front of them. And it's um, it may, like, we'll, we'll be handing out the FAQ, right? Um, and maybe maybe with that or something, um, could be the, the motions that we're gonna make or something. I don't know, it's, it's.
Well, I thought uh, during the dry run, Mr. Semino said uh, that there would be a table or tables as you enter the area of the town meeting with, you know, s- stacks of handouts. So if you don't care about the lighting, you won't grab one. If you do, you'll grab one to read it. And then usually when the article comes up, there's a, a bunch of people that'll say, I don't have it. And, okay, raise your hand and we'll, we'll, we'll get it to you. It's cumbersome, but that's the way, that's the way it used to be, you know, forever, so.
Yeah, I think, I think Mr. Hagerty said to coordinate with him for what you want to have for handouts.
But they're not printing it. I think we have to print it.
We print it, yes.
Yeah. So we have to figure out what we're gonna print. So is it, oh, you know, maybe we think about that. How do you consolidate it all into one page? It's not a big packet.
Well, you really are only proposing to change that one, that, those two, the one paragraph in the warrant that's printed to these two paragraphs.
And the definitions.
And the definitions, if you put that on a page, I don't know.
Yeah, we also wanted to share the FAQ with people, which is, it's already a full two-sided thing. So maybe we.
So it might be two pages if it's two amendments and then the FAQ double-sided.
And then just staple it or something.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay.
I can do that.
We can figure that out.
Yeah, no worries.
Any more questions, comments? Marnie? Dustin, lot of, lot of time, lot of work, research, coordination on this one. A great credit to both of you if, if we're able to get it passed. So um, again, there's a draft report that uh, the town planner has um given us. So again, we should, or we, we could entertain a motion that um that draft that the planning board is okay with with the revisions, with the uh, proposed amendments.
Do we want to vote on the amendment first?
Yes, let's do that. So there's two amendments. What's the first one?
Applicability.
So Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we um support the motion, the uh addition of the applicability to the annual town meeting warrant article update section one seven four dash twelve dot one, outdoor illumination.
Article thirty-five.
For article thirty-five.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to support that amendment, proposed amendment. Any discussion? All in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Stan, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Uh, Houlihan, yes.
So Marnie, what is the second proposed amendment?
Uh, the second proposed amendment is to insert the definitions of flood luminare and spot luminare to the wait, hold on one second. Stop. Is it spotlight and floodlight? Or spot luminare and flood luminare?
Hold on.
It says, okay, it's, it's again, it's luminaires. It says outdoor illumination by flood or spot luminaires rated.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, let me start again. Rewind. Uh, this is a, this is for um, article thirty-five uh, for
What do you mean?
Yep, amendment of language to insert two definitions into the definitions um, part of the bylaw for flood luminare and spot luminare.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing now all in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Stan, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, so the planning board has voted to support the amendments. Now we need a, a motion to support the article with the amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Don, with or without? What if the amendments are not? You definitely want it with amendments only.
I don't know if the article could survive without the amendments.
True.
Or would we want it to go forward without the amendments? I'm not sure if we would.
Probably not because the written, the warrant language for applicability is different, right? It says immediate compliance. So you're right, if, if you don't support the immediate compliance with the lighting. So you're right. I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss that.
So the motion is to support the article with the amendments. Any other discussion? All in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Stan, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
So going back to the site plan um warrant article where we closed the public hearing, I don't think we actually took a vote to support that article.
We took a vote, but we accidentally said article thirty-five.
Well, we also said that it would be, that, that we would, we voted to support the report. But the reports, the report says that we voted five to zero to support the article. And we never took that vote.
Right.
So what article number is it, Karina?
I'm sorry, it's article thirty-six. You're correct, article thirty-six.
So we would need a motion to support article thirty-six.
So moved.
With the amendment. And that amendment is to re- return the uh constructive approval.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to support article thirty-six. Or did you say thirty-five?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, only with the amendment? So we don't support it without the amendment?
Yeah, let me just back up.
Yeah, either way, you're right. Yep.
We, we had a motion, um, approve town planner amend the report for site plan article thirty-six um, to include with or without on the, at town meeting floor, with or without the amendment. So there was a motion.
That was to, that was to approve the report.
Okay.
But in the report, it says that we voted to support the article. And now that's what the motion is right now, is to support the article with or without the amendment. Everybody agree with that? Any more discussion? All in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Stan, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Okay, now back to outdoor illumination.
Mm-hmm.
We voted to support the amendments. We voted to support the article with the amendments. So the next step would be to close the public hearing. Mr. Mills?
Well, I think, I'll let Marnie go first, but I think she's gonna say the same thing I am.
Yeah, you, you asked us to have the um, building commissioner and some of the people that um Board of Selectmen and such review some of our changes. So what if they come back and want to modify it?
We would, uh, I guess in, in that case, we would, this, this motion uh, or we could have another motion that would give you, Marnie, Destin, and Sarah the authority to decide whether or not to um accept uh, changes from any, from anybody. You, you, the planning board's giving you the green light to have the final say on what language the amendments would, would be.
So could we do that and still keep the the warrant article open until May twenty-fourth? Just in case.
Well, this, the, the amendments are draft until they're brought forward at town meeting, when the article comes up. So by giving the working group the green light to have this final say on the, on the final language of the draft amendment, I mean, that can change. And we, we've seen people changing their amendments while they're walking up to hand it to uh to the town clerk. So I don't, I, I don't think we, I'm not sure if we need to um, keep the public hearing open. This is an amendment. And it, it's not gonna go anywhere until it's read to the town meeting people and then they decide. And they can even revise it, which we've seen.
I, I mean, I'm comfortable doing whatever Marnie and the working group are, are comfortable doing. So I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult. I just want to make sure that they're, they're comfortable with, uh, and, and I'm fine giving them that um, authority, so.
Yeah, I don't know about Dustin and Sarah, but I feel like the language as it is, I think we're happy with. I don't think we want any changes to that language. But I think if you give us the ability to kind of think about that, if there's suggested changes, I, I think, you know, we would appreciate that ability to say yay or nay. But I think probability we will say.
Mr. Chair, I give, I'd like to make a motion that we give the working group the authority to make uh uh, adjustments to the amendment as needed uh, for town meeting uh, floor to article thirty-five.
Second.
So outdoor illumination is thirty-five?
Correct.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing now all in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Stan, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
So we have a plan for the path forward ranging from uh, having others review the language, um, huddling with th- those people that we need to as far as handouts and getting the language of those handouts, getting them printed, making sure that they're not left in Sarah's trunk of a car in Beckett Saturday morning. If there's nothing else on this, then if it's appropriate, we could entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to close the public hearing for annual town meeting warrant article update section one seven four dash twelve dot one, outdoor illumination.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to close public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing now all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
We may be hearing another barking, uh, dog in a few seconds here. Um, and I'll try to mute myself, so it's not distracting.
But I point out one Scrivener's error, um, Don, when, when the motion was made for the ZBA article. For the non-conforming, um, warrant article that the ZBA sponsored. The motion accidentally said article thirty-five, it really meant article thirty-four, cuz it's. ZBA is number thirty-four. Outdoor illumination is article thirty-five. And the site plan warrant article is article thirty-six. So I just wanted to put that in the record for the meeting.
It's in the record, right, Kate? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the, uh, other business properly before the board planners report.
Thanks, everyone.
May I pause for one second?
Thank you, Destin.
Thank you, Dustin.
Great work, and Marnie, you wanted to have a timeout?
Yeah, just really quickly before Destin left. Um, John, you and I had discussed something, um, after we closed out tonight. Where we could practice, can I invite Destin back for practice?
Absolutely, because it's, uh, it, it's actually, um, Karina and I researched the, uh. Open meeting law, um, requirements, and this would clearly fall in the area of training. The board is able to, um. Meet. You know, beyond a quorum. For the purpose of training, and that's what this is, that's, that's what this will be. That answer the question?
Yeah.
So you, you, you gotta hang around, Destin.
Marnie will message me when it's time to go.
Okay.
Thanks, Dustin.
Thanks again, yep.
Thank you, and Sarah, truly Sarah, that's why we're.
Absolutely, no, you guys are great.
Karina, you're on, planners report.
Okay, um, very quickly, uh, we received an update from town administrator. Um, Friday evening, that it's the goal that the town offices, the town offices will. Uh, reopen to the public on Monday, June first, is the, um, anticipated timeframe. Um, with all, um. Precautions in place, um, when you're inside the building, and also, um. That's the big thing, that's the big news, so, um, the town.
At some point. A- at some point, we may actually be able to use the hearing room again?
At some point, but not at that point, we still have to do remote meetings for now, um, but that may be following this in the. Relatively near future.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, let's see here, um. Uh, on April thirtieth, uh, Southborough had, um, its Arbor Day, and again, even though there was no specific event. Um, there are trees that were planted out next to the historical museum, um. Some are there just being staged, some will probably be moved, um, but they're prospering there, that they're growing. There, and the tree we planted two years ago, um, is looking good, it's growing and the leaves were red, so it, it's, um, it's a good thing. Uh, I wanna point out that there is a free training webinar code of conduct for town boards and committees on May twelfth. At eleven-thirty virtual workshop, I believe I forwarded that to everybody. And then, um, tomorrow is annual town election. Um. At which, um, Mimi Latrell is, um, for her planning board seat. And. Sarah and I continue to work with the building department to progress on any. Non-compliance issues at some of the, um, locations we're looking at right now, and at some point, we'll report back on those in more detail.
Um. Did you wanna speak at all about open space inspections?
Oh, yes, I can speak to that, um, we're in the process of procuring, um. Lucas Environmental for fiscal year twenty-one open space inspections. Uh, we provided him with a list, uh, when I say we, um. I put together a list and I, um, sent them, included, uh, the S K, Chair of the Open Space Committee, Commission. To review the list as well, and she gave me an idea of a couple priorities she had. So we have a list of ten locations, of which seven will be able to, um, address under this year's contract. Um, that contract will probably be finished and signed this week, and they'll start their work. Um, which will be substantially completed by June thirtieth. Any questions on that? Um, once that contract is drafted, um, as in previous years, uh, Don will review it and sign it. Um. As he's done in the past. To make sure everything's in order.
Right, unless the board wants to handle it a different way. Hearing no objections, and that's the way we'll do it.
Um, I'll also point out that, um, I am, I'm following up on Fayetteville Hall and, um. As you recall, uh, there was an auction house that was permitted there. And, um, we're looking into the status of that, see what's going on with that. To be reported back on in the near future. And that's all I have this evening.
The approval of minutes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we approve the minutes from April twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one as written.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing now all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Item on the agenda is, um, our next meeting is now. May twenty-fourth, which is two, two days after, uh, town meeting. Any, uh, other questions, comments from the public, from the board? We.
Me, me, thank you for re- for running for reelection.
Yes.
So after, if, if the next item is to, uh, vote on adjourning. Then, and if that passes, then Sarah will, um. What's the term, kick everybody else out?
Yes, I'll stop the recording and I'll close the webinar.
And.
We do currently have one attendee, just so you're aware. Currently have one attendee.
And then the seven of us. Eight of us, uh, Kate's welcome to stay.
Um. Thank you so much.
The eight of us would, uh, then. Would then go into a, uh, a short training session.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing now all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes.